Okay, at the top we just listed the Scottsboro City Schools Mission Statement. Right underneath, we place, when we do the CIP, we set goals for our school. Usually one is a reading goal and one is a math goal. So I've listed our reading goal first. Is there anything we could start on this after? Amy, do you think we're over? I'd like to start here. At the top I put quick facts of just Caldwell Elementary, where current enrollment right now is 402. Our student attendance rate is at about 96% and our average class size is 20. We have 37 certified employees, 15 support employees, and we have grade levels from pre-K all the way to 4th grade. When we're looking at our accountability piece, our 34th graders are who our accountability is raised against. So I've added some charts. We talked about data-driven instruction. We have to, I wanted to show you exactly what we're talking about when we talk about that, how we get that data. When our students come to us in the fall, we assess them in different ways. There's a variety of tools. Of course, our state-approved assessment method is the Scantron Performance Series. So I've added just the 3rd and 4th grade here for you to kind of get a snapshot shot of what we look at. It maybe gets raised up just a little bit. On the left side you see the 3rd grade proficiency levels. With ACT, ASPIRE, they considered proficiency numbers 30s and 4s. Scantron does it through above-average or average-high. So you see our 3rd grade on the left side. When they came in the beginning, the green is our above-average or what they would have considered a 4. The blue is our average-high, which we would have considered a 3. Yellow would be the 2. And 1 would be our below-average and that would be the red. So we track them in the fall. Through the fall, we develop our plans of how we're going to drive that instruction to help these students and base off of their needs. We progress monitor throughout the fall and the winter, but we take another winter assessment so that you can see how that data is changing. What we hope to see is that that red and yellow goes down and our blue and green goes up. But you can see in our 3rd grade, that's happening. On the right side of the chart is our 4th grade. Same thing, you want to see those red and yellows go down and you want to see that blue and green go up. So you're okay? I think, we're gonna scroll down right now. One of the things unique about Caldwell is that 6% of our overall population is made of EL students, English language learners. That doesn't mean that these students are not fluent in the English language, but it does mean that they have both languages spoken at home or maybe just another language is primary in their home. So we're really focusing on our English language learners. I put a little note here of some of our instructional goals. We target their fluency and comprehension of the English language. We do that in a variety of ways. To address those needs, those classroom teachers utilize what we call Samuel training and strategies. All of these students are available and do participate in our Title I intervention services, grade level intervention services, as well as our ASPIRE intervention, which is something I'm extremely proud of. And our EL teacher works with them in both small group instruction and sometimes the one-on-one. All of our faculty and staff at Caldwell and across the district are participating in monthly EL trainings using the online modules. Some of our spotlight bright points, the administration, I was excited about that. That was one of my favorites. I like to say that we have a very welcoming and friendly school culture. If you've not been to Caldwell, I highly suggest you come by, it's a beautiful school. Everybody's grinning all the time, I love it there. I spent 15 years at Brownwood before I came there and I love it, it's just like home too, so. We are an AMSTI math and science school. We have pre-K program in our building that hosts 16 students. We have ASPIRE intervention, a full-time ASPIRE interventionist for all of our identified students. I'll talk about that a little bit more later on. This year, for the first time, we have a student leadership team that we've implemented for our 3rd and 4th graders to put them in leadership roles throughout the school. To do some, they raise the flag in the mornings and they take it down in the afternoons. They help greet students and get students out of cars. They do recycling. They manage our Nurish One Child backpack program, bags that go home with our students. I mean, you see them throughout the school all the time working. And that's been a really good thing because they have to keep a certain grade level and they have to be recommended. So we have a lot of students that are really pushing to try to get those jobs, that's been a good thing. We have strong PTO involvement. Our family engagement activities are ongoing throughout the year. Just earlier in the week, we hosted a Parents Lunch and Learn. We provided the lunch for the parents, they came in and we got to talk about what do these assessments need? And why is this important to you? We have a full-time nurse, all of our staff is CPR certified. We actually do host the district-wide elementary life skills unit, which is a phenomenal part of our school. And this year, we have the Reading Plus and Ticket to Read. Those are two of our web-based programs that we've implemented. So while, if we could flip to the back of it. Well, we, like I said, when we develop our CIPs, we look at the needs of our students, so we develop a reading goal and a math goal. Now while 3rd and 4th grade are accountability measures, we don't just look at 3rd and 4th. We work from kindergarten first, really start focusing major on where our needs are in second, so that we're ready to go on to 3rd. So our reading goal, like everybody's, was to increase that overall student proficiency. We wanted 58% of our 3rd and 4th grade students to be demonstrating proficiency in reading. And so these are some of the strategies that we've put in place. Of course, data-driven instruction. After we progress monitor, if we see needs, our instruction changes to meet those needs. We do data meetings for analysis, small group instruction, our tiered intervention plan, running records, daily formative assessment. So in the middle, I pick what our tiered intervention is. Each one of my grade levels has a grade level intervention time. And this 30 minutes that's set aside, students are leveled, not just for those who are needing intervention or extra help, but for those students that are performing higher above their grade level, they get some enrichment time there. So we start first with that, the grade level intervention. We have Title I intervention, which is designed outside of the school setting, outside of the classroom. It's more in a small group. And then we have what I told you earlier I was the most proud about, ASPIRE. ASPIRE is a research-based intensive intervention program that is sequentially based to help students master those critical areas of reading. So not only do our EL students, all of our identified EL students in the school, any identified dyslexic students or any students who are showing any signs, get to go to that ASPIRE instruction. I added right there beside our current data of our 2nd grade proficiency level, so you can see how that, how we track that as well. Same as the 3rd and 4th grade, we want those blues and greens to be more than the reds and yellows. Our math goal, like I said, we are an AMSTI school, so we have the AMSTI coaches that come in once, sometimes twice a month, and do lessons with our teachers and kind of guide us through our increased overall student proficiency. We wanted 60% of our 3rd and 4th grade students to demonstrate that proficiency. We're relying a good bit on that AMSTI coaching partnership to help us with that RTI intervention and designing those lessons and also allowing our students to accelerate. Sort of the same thing, those daily formative assessments, tiered instruction outside of that core. And then we use some web-based programs to do student acceleration. Now I kind of ran through that a little fast, but do you all have any questions for me?
How much participation do you give to your family engagement? Is it happening during the day when people are at the hospital or is it happening?
We have both. We have both. Of course, our PTO events always bring in a good debt. But so far, we've hosted two nighttime events, our after-school evening events, and we have a lot of people who come. Now during the day, this last, earlier in the week, we did the Lunch and Learn. We actually had close to 20, was it period, 20 parents that came. We designed it during their lunch hour and I did two sessions. One was from 11 to 12 and the other was for 12 to 1, fed on lunch. And just wanted their feedback on, is this easier for you? Because sometimes when it's sports are going on and they don't get off work until 5:30, it's hard to get there. They really liked it. You know, they said, "If you're gonna feed me lunch, I can come." So I like the way that went. I'd like to, next year I'd like to do more of those. With more smaller groups, you got more personal interaction. So we enjoyed that. Trying some different things to see what we can do.
I just, I work at the hospital, so I get a lot of complaints from parents that say, you know, they have all these things during the day and I can't get off of work. I can't leave in the middle of the day, go home, lunch, you know. I don't know, I just, when I hear those kind of things, I think of the people that are.
Well, the presentation that I did on the 2nd, I'm doing again on March the 8th, that are Math Night for the parents, for the parents that didn't get to come. And a lot of them, I actually had one email me that I think has come today, so she's coming in tomorrow to sit down and chat with me Friday's was her off day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably already said this, but I've got a learning disability myself. You've already done all your testing for this year.
No, we'll test again in the spring.
So we could actually have some improvement on it, we're hoping.
Yes, we're tracking that. We've got some gains that have, I didn't know those end because I didn't have a lot of space, but we're tracking the gains and our gains are there. I'm very pleased, I've got some of the best teachers ever right there in that school, so. And they're working. For it to be far or 31. Yes, it is, thank you. Okay, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for this opportunity for me to be able to share our CIP with you and brag on our school and our teachers and staff. We have three goals on our CIP, those are the things, the three goals that I'm gonna talk about. Some of our notable achievements, they're listed. Drama Club and Leadership Ambassadors, Yearbook Staff, EXCITE Partnership with EAH, which is the first year we've done this. Let me find my notes and see what that stands for. The EXCITE Program and Frances Coleman helped us with this, the high school, the junior high, so it was just a phenomenal program. The EXCITE Program stands for Exploring Collaborations That Inspire Transformation in Education. So it was a wonderful experience for our students this year. Club Wildcat, Nurish One Child, 5th grade pilot math program. Ms. Bell and Mr. Tubbs have been helping my 5th grade math teachers with this pilot program this year. The math teachers, they jumped on board, they said, "Yes, it's extra work," but they're so excited. And the purpose of this, forgive me for having to read it, but I did not memorize it, to implement a data-driven process to address learning gaps in math, to increase collaboration regarding instructional practices and to create action steps for gains in student achievement. So we are working on that right now. And our Disney Yes Program. Our first goal was the Parent Involvement Family Engagement Goal. That goal was to increase student growth by increasing opportunities for parents to become involved in their child's education in a meaningful way as measured by the number of parents attending various parent involvement activities. Some of our activities include parent-student orientation, implementation of the School Home Compact, gifted orientation, Black and Gold Spirit Day, our annual Title I meeting, Grandparents' Day, Parent Involvement Night, World War II Open House, fan concerts, and Field Day. So far, I'm really big on sign-in sheets, like please sign-in sheets, these are my documentation sheets. So today, we sat down and counted my sign-in sheets. So today, we have a little over 800 parents, grandparents, community stakeholders that have visited our school this year so far. I'm very proud of that. Some of our communication sources, report cards, progress reports, Thursday Communication folders, our student planners, testing data sheets, Facebook, Remind, School Messenger, Communicates, and Parent Meetings. In your packet, if you will look, I have a couple, there's four handouts. The first handout, it's got a number 1 up in the corner, it's a copy of our Family Engagement Title I Plan. That's our plan for the whole year. That lists all the activities that we do, that we have done each month, the reason why we have done them, and what we hope the parents are gonna learn from those. So I just gave you a copy of that for you to look at later. The second one is our parent data sheets. Those are the sheets that we use for our STAR 360 and our Scantron. We send those home to the parents. The Scantron, fall, winter, and spring, and the STAR, once a month. That tracks the student's progress from the fall to the spring. That is sent home to the parents. The third handout is our student data card. Our students keep up with this information themselves for the whole year, that's in their data notebook. That tracks their progress from August to May. So in May, those students will take this card home and it tells their score from August all the way to May. So it shows their progress. And the teachers have student conferences with their students about their progress and they use this data card to, when they sit and talk to their students. So we love that. Quick facts. Our enrollment at this time is grade 43. Our student attendance rate is 95%. Our teacher attendance rate is 90%. And even though that is, doesn't look that great, 90%, it's also professional development included in that. So it's not just our teachers are out for whatever reason. Our average class size is 25, support employees 10, and certified employees we have 25. Our second goal is our reading goal. Our reading goal, I mean, you want us to, yeah, go down and then I'll probably have to come back up to the data. Thank you. Our reading goal is to increase proficiency levels in reading by 4% as measured by STAR 360 to match the system-wide accountability. Also, our reading goal is to increase our proficiency levels in reading by 2% as measured by our Scantron. Our STAR 360 fall testing reflected 53% of students were proficient. And our winter testing reflected that 61% of students were proficient in reading. So we have, that's how we got the 9% increase, which is huge. Our goal was 4% on STAR 360 and 2% on Scantron. So we have already achieved and exceeded our goal that we have set for the end of the year in reading. So we're very proud of that. On the data analysis, thank you Amy for going back to your folder. On the data analysis, where it says Reading Benchmark Report, that's our January scores for reading with STAR and then of course the math, and I'll talk about that next. In January, we had 61% of our students were at or above proficiency levels. So we're very proud of that. We still have some red, we still have some yellow. We are still working really hard every single day to make that green bigger. As Porcu said, "Bois d'eau." We're working to make those proficiency levels higher. An area of focus, we are going to continue to have our data meetings. We have our data meetings once a month. If you'll look on your handout number 4, it's a copy of our data sheet. This is what we use every single month. It's got Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3. The teachers, they give the students their STAR reading and math assessment. They look at that data, they put down, say Julie Petty would be in, say Tier 3. And so Julie Petty needs to really work hard on these standards so I can get moved up to Tier 2 the next month. Does that make sense? Yes, okay, alright. I'm going fast. So I've also put a copy of that in your folder also. That data guides us for our intervention and instruction. Also, the reading and math teachers are vertically aligned. They do the same lesson plans, they have the same formative assessments for all reading and math students. And our goal is to have our language, math, and social studies subjects vertically aligned next year. And our third goal is math. And our math goal is to, thank you, increase the proficiency levels by 2% as measured by our STAR 360 and to increase the proficiency levels in math by 2% as measured by Scantron. Our area of success, our STAR 360 data shows an increase of 5% from fall to winter. Our fall testing reflected 63% of students were proficient. And the winter testing reflected that 67.5% of students were proficient. So we are very proud of that. So our score of 2% that we said, we have achieved that as well. As our end of the year goal, we have already achieved that percent. Final note. In closing, I've talked to Amy about this and I've talked to some of the teachers and I thought, you know, I cannot say enough about the teachers at our school because in 2010 and 2011, and a lot of you know this and some of you may not, our school was identified as a focus school under Alabama's Accountability Model due to our performance in reading and math under our Special Education Subcourse. Accepting this principal, the principal's position the following summer, the teachers and I all looked at this as a challenge. We worked collaboratively to make necessary changes. During that time, we received federal funding for professional development and supplemental needs. And I can proudly say, I get emotional because I'm so excited and I'm happy, that we're no longer a focus school and we receive to be on our State Report Card. I'm so proud of these teachers and the staff because they work so hard every day. Does anyone have any questions? No questions.
Very informative, thank you.
Thank you very much.
As Ms. Childress is pulling up the data for Brownwood Elementary School, let me just go on record and say how fortunate and how blessed I am to be able to serve as the principal of Brownwood Elementary School. I want to thank the Scottsboro Board of Education and Dr. Reyes and this community for allowing me to serve as principal of Brownwood Elementary School. Not really sure what I remember, G was on the agenda tonight, but let me just say this, since Brownwood is not one of the options on the reconfiguration consolidation plan, I don't know how long I need to take for this CIP. But because the Continuous Improvement Plan is a reflection and an indicator of what the school is doing, I'd just like to share this with you. One of the things I'd like to point out to our school, for our school, is that with the enrollment 319, the students attendance is 97%, teachers attendance is 97%, 10 support employees, and 28 certified employees. Ms. Childress, if you could just raise that up a little bit, I'd like to show that. I think Ms. Petty indicated just a second ago about that first annual State Report Call. And I just want to thank everybody for their support. Now, I want you to know that we did receive an A rating even though this might be a snapshot, a performance snapshot of what takes place in schools. I'd just like to proudly say that Brownwood is one of two schools in the Scottsboro City District that received an A rating. I don't set the criteria, we just do what's been asked of us. And we're one of two schools out of 31 schools in the county that got an A rating. And so we're just, we're just proud of all of our schools. And so we just thank Brownwood and Nelson, Caldwell, Collins, Scottsboro Junior High, and Scottsboro High School, did I leave out? We're very proud, we're very proud of them. And so as we look at this accountability, this kind of tells us some of the things we need to focus on, the state levels, our system levels, and where we are as a school. And you can see academic achievement is 40% overall. I think, you know, I think that's pretty good, I don't know, what do I know? And then if you look at the academic growth, 50% overall score, I don't know what that means, but it sounds like it must be pretty good. So I'm just glad to know that we're doing the right thing. If we look at chronic absenteeism, I'd like to thank Ms. Bell for working with us as we address issues of attendance. Being a former attendance officer, that is probably something that we're all gonna all have to address and it's getting a lot better. And so even at a 14.65%, our school did pretty good. And again, the Continuous Improvement Plan is just telling a story about what your school is. As an ongoing document, it ever changes, just like there's always need for improvement. Ms. Childress, if you move up just a little bit. That's good. And Brownwood Elementary School, we also deal and work with the attendance issues as well as the EL population, English language teachers, English language students. We like to make sure that we provide the various programs that will assist them in learning, inspire them for reading and speaking and listening and writing. One of the things as a district and as a school is our writing performances need to improve. And we want to look at technology and partner with others to just make sure that we can accommodate not only our EL students, but all of our students because that's gonna be important as we move on down the line. As we talk about Google coming to town and TBA coming to town, there are so many resources and so many things that we need to do as we enter into the workforce development projects as that goes on down the line. You gotta start somewhere. And so in elementary school, we need to make sure that we put forth the best foot and share that information with our students, our community. And just know that as we use those Samuel practices and strategies, we also use, we follow the WEDA, which stands for World Class Instructional Design Assessment. And these are the standards that we use throughout our system. And this is part of the curriculum that our students can be involved in. English language students participated in the SPAR program, I bet Ms. Hood indicated the SPAR program. It was like, I'd just like to say, as a Brownwood staff person, I want to brag on my staff, I want to brag on my school because many of these things that we have on our achievements list are like pilot programs. And so one of the things that SPAR has done for us has indicated that there is a need for people that might have dyslexia, that might have, might be struggling readers, but also helps in our EL population, so we're very, very glad about that too. Instruction will be provided in whole groups, small groups, one-on-one instruction, Title I services that's throughout our school. And we just know that this assessment data helps us in guiding, along guiding, in that continuous improvement because we're always looking for improvement. This last section down here, if you just scroll up just about a half of, half of sentence there. Nurturing Environment. One of the things that Brownwood, don't go too high now. One of the things that Brownwood is known for is a nurturing environment, parent orientation and programs, real environment. We have one of the warmest schools in the district, one of them. I think all of them are, but I'd just like to leave it, we're special. I just, I swear I am, I swear. And so the, one of the ways that you create a nurturing environment is to provide safety, school safety. Now we've talked about school safety and the situation in Florida and other places, but you have to make sure that your building is clean, the building is safe, and that your teachers are inspired to learn. We need to inspire our teachers and that's what goes. We need to inspire our teachers and that's what, going to be one of the things that we're going to talk about just shortly. If you just scroll down just a little bit and I'll go over to the next page in just a second.
And I know you're going to let me know.
Yes ma'am, if you just come down, just, just.
Wait, I think we have to go to the second page.
Just, I mean, go, 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 go up. I need to, yeah, that way, that way. Okay. I am proud to say that one of the, one of the teachers in our school is a certified, nationally certified teacher. I'm just saying with a nationally certified teacher, two doctors in that building, a host of staff and employees and, and support personnel, community involvement, that's why we got an A rating. I'm not saying that other people don't have an A rating, but I just believe that we're just going to make a difference. We are also at Amstow School. Amstow has come to our school and asked to partner with us to make sure that, that we can train and teach other Amstow personnel on down the road. Pre-K programs, we have eighteen students currently. We are involved in so many different activities. I, I didn't realize how much we are involved until we started writing them down. Earth day activities where, where, and we're not sure how that's going to go this year with earth day activities because of the reconfiguration and consolidation plan. STEM day activities, science, technology, engineering and math, we, we do those constantly. We have programs throughout the year that involve students and parents alike. American Heritage Program, American Heritage Program. Grade level performances, we were just talking about perimeter involvement. I, I was just thinking the last program that we had on last, on the twenty-second of this month, we had about two hundred and thirty-two parents that had signed in, parents, grandparents, big mamas, little mamas, who were just coming in and signing. And we're glad about that. And one of the things we do is to also have that informational session where we tell parents about the Scantron scores, we tell them about the STAR three sixty, we tell them about the testing assessments and all of the accommodations and things that we do within our school, including Title One programs that, so that the parents will be informed and know what's going on throughout the day. They're always welcome to come to our school. Again, the SPAR program was a pilot program there at our school. The SPAR stands for the Specialized Program in Visualized Reading Excellence. And so we're just, we're just thankful for the results that we see. We too have a full-time SPAR coordinator, director, I almost said director, but yeah, we got a person that does that as well as other teachers are now learning to teach and, and be, be become involved in SPAR. I get so excited sometimes I can't hold it up. All right. Value partnership with all stakeholders, that includes the parents, merchants, community leaders. We're just glad to be partnering with so many different people. We do have a high at-risk population. Currently our, our, our at-risk CFP numbers are right at sixty-two percent free and reduced lunches and, and so we're just doing the very best we can. Beat time is something that we're very proud of. The first thirty minutes of each day, we have a beat time which stands for Brownwood Educational Time Daily. And this is where we get strategic planning and assessment so the kids can have that one-on-one instruction as well as other type of guided information if they are weak or lacking in an area. Our teachers do a very, very good job of doing that. Low teacher turnover rate, I guess that could be said in the Scottsboro City School District. Everybody wants to come to Scottsboro because we have an outstanding school district and I'm very proud, proud to say that. Implementation of Nourish One Child One, again, that's a pilot program that we use. So you got to start somewhere. That's, that's my mantra, you got to start somewhere. Excuse me. We have a bredda, freshwater grass, some of you, if you've ever been in our school, those little things. Ms. Don, if you want some cold water, you can just go over there and it's filtered and it's good. I drink a lot of it and, and it kind of replaces the, the water fountains where you, where you press the, press a button and the water shoots all over everywhere. But they, they'll still find a spot to make a water splash, but we're very good about that. Outdoor classroom, community gardens, I think on tomorrow, Ms. Williams and, and Ms. Wood. Now, Ms. Wood is a volunteer, she's not a volunteer, but she's a retired teacher that comes over and helps and she's working with our, our at-risk students and she provides services to many of our students as well as other Title One services and resources that are involved. But tomorrow, well, depending, they will, they will be outside in the outdoor classroom and, and they're going to be planting cabbages that's been donated from one of those, I forget the name of the company that, that donates those cabbages, but that's going to be tied in with our, with our STEM program. Why is it tied in with STEM program? Because you're talking about the soil, you're talking about the plants, you're talking about how, how much length that takes place during the course of the day, during the course of the life of the cabbage, what time of day it comes and those kinds of things. They do the measurement and size and that's part of the STEM program that we're, that we're involved in. Science, technology, engineering and math. And so you can do the numbers, you can do the math and it's, it's very, very good. STAR three sixty and math programs have been implemented. One of the things that, one of these charts is going to show is that we need greater assistance and, and better concentration in our math programs. If you will turn the page, Ms. Childress, if you don't mind, whichever way it might go.
I'll just have to do it.
This might be a little bit small, but, okay, that's good. Reading, reading literacy is one of the big things that, that's on everybody's mind and as we address these issues, we need to make sure that, can you go up just, can you come down just a little bit more because there's something that I want to show here. The other way, the other way. When I learn which way up and down is, I'm going to be the serious contender, I'll tell you. Okay, there it is right there. Our mission statement. And so we have the Scottsboro City School, the purpose of Scottsboro City School is to maximize the learning of all students. We have a Brownwood admission statement, which everybody has an admission statement. Together we shape the future of our community by inspiring all learners to reach success in a secure and caring environment. That's what we do, that's who we are. And so we, we create that inspire. You know, one of the things that has happened to many of you, somebody inspired you, somebody encouraged you. We don't always, we don't always get it. Some kids don't always get it, but if they can be inspired to learn, I always tell them, raise your hand if you got a question. And when you raise your hand, you says, "I'm not afraid to learn." That's what we're stealing into our students. And so it's just a, it's just a good day to be a Brownwood. So our reading goal for third and fourth grade was to gain two percent from the fall to the spring as measured by the Scantron performance, performance students. If you look over on the right-hand side, we, in the fall, we have seventeen, seventeen percent received performance and, and then on the, and then in the winter, I'm kind of getting tied up again. In the winter, that was a fourteen percent. So what happened was we had a three percent increase. We went for two percent, but we got three percent from, from the fall, from the fall to, from the fall to the, I think it was indicated from August the first, two thousand seventeen to August twentieth, two thousand seventeen, we got seventeen, seventeen percent. And then in, from December to, December nineteenth to February the twenty-first, we got fourteen, which gave us a three percent increase in our student proficiency. And so those are the things that we're going to work on and tackling. It, it's not a quick fix. It takes time and, and the trend that I like with Brownwood is that we're growing and we're going in the right direction, we're going in the right direction. And so we're going to, let me just say this, and, and, and we're going to grow and we're going to go until we can grow and go no more. Okay? And so I've asked our teachers to come to school, inspiring, teaching. I've asked our students to learn because we're going to grow and do everything we can while we can. As a matter of fact, I have a plaque in my office that says, "Lord, today help me to do all I can while I can." None of us know how long we're going to live, but as while we're here, we need to do the very best we can. And so we've got a three percent increase in our reading, reading literacy goal. And so for math, we're not doing quite so hot. But one of the reasons why we went from a twenty-seven to a thirty, our gain there was because for the first time, our kindergarten students are now taking the test. And so when you're in flux or when you have an input of a different type of environment, different kind of situation, it impacts the overall score. And for this particular score, it decreased about three percent. And so we know that we got to work a little harder in math and that was, that's one of our goals. Math goal for third and fourth grades will be two percent from fall to spring as measured by the Scantron performance. Again, we'll be using small group instruction, GoMath intervention, differentiated instruction, Amstow math, summer training, embedded professional development within and without the classroom. We're glad to partner with UAH in, in this Amstow program. Ms. Ann Iyer comes over periodically and she helps us in areas of STEM. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You enjoyed our information.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on through the information items and let me, let me just make a quick statement just so we can make sure we get it on the record. Back on the consolidation plan, that was exactly as we had on the board agenda the last time, just for us of you in the audience. It was pre-K and K at Nelson, one three at Caldwell, four six at Collins, and then the junior high and the high school staying the same. So just please make sure this is down, that we get that in the board minutes. Safety upgrades, real quick, I just want to let you all know where we were. Tony said if it wasn't for the, for the rain, we actually would have gotten the secure access system up and running today at Caldwell. We might actually have it, Tony, tomorrow, potentially.
It's coming Monday now. The keypad is coming up. It will be ready, but the external keypad, of course, can hit in, have some light.
And, and that system costs us four thousand?
Four thousand.
Four thousand, so.
It'll be, kind of explain what.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
One of the, at the front door, the door that will be our access point, there's a monitor there, a parent will come up, press that monitor. There's four stations within the school that should be somebody at at any time. They will acknowledge who's there, they have to look at them, they will buzz them in, the maglock will release and let them come in. So you can, it's, it's audio and visual and there's four, like, I'm not sure we didn't say where they are, but there's four open windows. There'll be four access points within the school for an adult to let those students in.
And that's because somebody might not be at the desk if you just put it at one desk. That way multiple people will be able to, and it will be like the principal, the secretary, the counselor, so we'll have them set at several places. Now, with the donations that we received from community, with community assistance, we're almost able to pay for a total of two. But what we'll do once we get this up and running, we'll show the community exactly what it looks like, kind of put a cost out there. And I'm sure I've actually had calls from others about how they can help. So when we give that information out in terms of money and then what it actually does, we feel like we'll get additional support there. So.
And we have a local person doing this, so from a service standpoint, that's, that's really good.
And so the goal is we will be moving school to school and getting those in. One of the things that y'all have mentioned several times about the junior high is how they're free buildings. It's the only school that we have that once you enter the building, you have to leave the building. And so one of the things that has been mentioned in several work sessions are a fencing system and we've actually got that in the works. If you can picture it in your mind, a fence would be from the main building and it would actually encapsulate, if, if you're, if you're looking at the band room, if you're standing there looking at the band room, you know there's two sets of double doors on each side. Well, it would, that fencing would then encapsulate the main building and to the two double doors nearest the band room so that kids could go in. And then it would close off under the canopy, the lunchroom and the gym, and then it would go from the lunchroom back to the side of the building. And so the egress there would be from the building, if you remember the main building, there are actually two double doors right there in the main building, so you have egress from there. They could again get into the gymnasium through the double doors, they could get to the gymnasium through the locker rooms, they could get to the lunchroom as well. And we're also in contact with, we'll have to make sure that the fire, we've talked with them and so they're going to give us some ideas in terms of any egress problems that we have, but we've got a price on aluminum and steel. And it, it's not a chain link fence now, it's not, it's not a chain link, it's an actual fence. We want it to look aesthetically good. We should be able to provide y'all some pictures of what it would look like at the next work session. So that's some of the comments we've got from the community that they were concerned about that as well. And what was it, five, five and a half, six feet?
Yeah, I've actually, five feet, five feet of the fence, I was around about six inches. We, from an egress standpoint for fire code, we may have to put a similar system to, to the security system to release, in, in event the fire alarm were to go off, it would release the gate so you could have egress if you had to be in there. We spent a lot of time last week talking to people.
And that would be catheter?
Yeah, we would have to measure, we'd have to measure. But, but is it okay by kind of getting up? I had different estimates. Highest thing I've had seventeen thousand steel, the lowest I've had, we're not doing chain link, the lowest so far for aluminum, was it eighty-five hundred, I think? I want to go see some of it before we make that decision of which one we do.
And on the maglocks, are they, do they have card readers?
No.
So how do they, and they have to buzz as well if they, if they use that, if they leave the building for whatever reason, come back, they have to.
We often talk in safety, we're not weed, but people are in that business, that you put it on a scale, you have safety here and convenience is down here. The higher up convenience comes, the safety comes down in it. So yes, it will be a little inconvenient and it's going to be for Leslie and people like that and all the secretaries, it's going to be a little distracting. There'll be a learning curve when it hits and go down and scan.
But they can access the building, wouldn't they?
At another.
At, at another door.
At another door, right, at another door. That's kind of where the keypad came in to today. A place like junior high, you've got that row of doors there, so they just go to the next door. But now like at Caldwell and Collins, they would have to go to a totally different entrance. And we already have a system there where if a door down on the end of the hall opens, the security is sustained, buzz, lights blink and so forth, so they'll know that someone's coming in that door. So we already, we already have that, that part.
That's one that'll be aware of.